I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. Tonight's meeting at the Higgins Middle School is being broadcast live on PAT and is also being recorded by the PB School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris. The matters on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by law. We have a full committee today, as well as our Superintendent, Dr. Herbert Levine, our Assistant Superintendent, Kara Murtagh, our Business Manager, Jared Stanton, and our Human Resources Director, Steve Farrell. Before we go on to our items, I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Levine, who has an introduction of two of our special students here at PB. I'd like to turn it over to you, Dr. Levine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce the Norman Twins, and I'd like to introduce Tracy Smith, their Principal, who's here with them, and their parents. Thank you very much for being here. The Norman Twins were born on Friday, October the thirteenth, and they are both eleven years old. Obviously, they're twins, so they're both eleven years old. Michelle is seven minutes older than James, and I knew that because in talking to Michelle, she's much more mature.[84.31][84.31][laughter] They have two cats, Lester and Brady, and one dog, Riley, and all the pets are boys. Michelle Norman is a fifth grader at the Carroll School, in Mrs. Shabano's class. Michelle loves geography, social studies, and art. She loves to doodle on everything. Michelle is a member of the Yellowjacket Silver XL Gymnastics Team, and has her first meet of the year this week. She has won many medals and takes classes three days a week. That's quite a commitment, Michelle. That's great. When Michelle grows up, she wants to be a photographer and travel with her best friend. James Norman is a fifth grader at the Carroll School, in Miss Pollack's class. James loves watching football, especially the Patriots. He wants to be in the NFL when he is older. I hope as a coach or a scout. James is currently trying out for the Carroll School's fifth grade boys' basketball team, and hopes to make it. Basketball is his second favorite sport.
You already made it.
Oh, yeah, and you did make it. Well, congratulations. That's excellent.[151.47][151.47][applause] And his second career choice. A better choice, by the way. Fewer concussions. If the NFL and NBA don't work out, he would like a career in technology. Beautiful. We could use you tonight.[166.01][166.01][laughter] Like both of his parents. Oh, are you both in technology? Can you give us a hand?[174.23][174.23][laughter]
I wanted to go back there when I was training.[178.12][178.12][laughter]
Feel free, send me the bill. In school, James enjoys reading, but really does well in math. He loves the Carroll School and is excited for middle school, too. Welcome, both of you. Thank you so much for being here, and please join the Mayor and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, everybody.
And if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to couple of items. First is the approval of minutes. We have one item, one regular school committee meeting minutes from October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Make a motion to approve October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Heard the motion for approval by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote for approval, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. And now, approval of bills. Mrs. Capener?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant A, number three-six-two-nine, dated November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two million, six hundred, ninety-five thousand, three hundred, sixty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents, subject to audit.
Second.
You've heard the motion for approval of Warrant A, number three-six-two-nine, made by Mrs. Capener, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve Warrant B, number three-six-three-two, dated November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one million, eight hundred, fifty-nine thousand, one hundred, eighty-two dollars and ninety-six cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Capener for approval of Warrant B, number three-six-three-two, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. If there's no objection, I'd like to go out of order for a moment. We have some students from the high school that would like to be heard, and if there's no objection, I'd like to go to their item first. We got the Ireland field trip.
No objection.
Okay. It's under Continued Business Number Four, and it was brought forward by Mrs. Capener. Should we have them come forward? Please, yep, all of you. Yep.[384.00][384.00][inaudible] Dr. Levine, can you just grab that one chair? Motion to receive.
Second.
Yep. We do have a handout, and it's been voted to receive, all in favor. So, welcome, all of you. If you could maybe just please introduce yourselves. Actually, I'll wait a moment for all of you to settle in.
Thank you.
So again, welcome to all of you. If you could just please introduce yourselves, your name and your grade, and then you can take it from there.
Talia Cabrera, I'm in the twelfth grade.
My name is Shima Kanua, I'm also a senior.
My name is Rebecca Dunn, I'm also a senior.
My name is Allison Cormier, I am also a senior.
Great. So, please, I'll let, I'll turn it over to you, and I understand you want to speak on this issue.
Within the packets that you were just handed, you will find the overview of the Ireland and Scotland tour that we hope to go on, and includes a detailed itinerary. Also, note the key points I have highlighted discussing, thank you, discussing the guide expert we will be with around the clock, and EF's commitment to safety. Also notice that the itinerary has us landing in Dublin, which will be noted on the next page as a low-threat area for terrorism, stated by the Bureau of Diplomatic Safety. The last page has some of the statistics of crime in Scotland versus the United States. I have highlighted in green the areas that United States has surpassed Scotland in crime. Also note in purple, I have pointed out that the amount of police officers in Scotland is far higher than in the United States. And lastly, directly from the Education First Tours website, it states our tour guidelines undergo extensive training, they have a direct line to EF officers locally and globally, and parents and students will have access to each other twenty-four-seven while on tour.
Thank you.
Dear school committee members and elected officials, my name is Allison Cormier, and I'm a senior at PB High School. I am here to voice my concern over the possible cancellation of the Ireland-Scotland trip this coming spring. I have never been to another country, and when I first heard about this trip, I was ecstatic for the opportunity to travel abroad. I heard about this trip from some friends who went two years ago. They had an unforgettable time and told me about all the things they learned about the Italian culture and history. After hearing this, I made traveling abroad a goal of mine, and over the past four years, I have saved a total of three thousand dollars to make this possible. This trip would provide the opportunity for a cultural and educational experience that I could not possibly receive without the school's assistance. Most of my background is Irish, so when I heard the trip was going to be to Ireland, I was overjoyed by the chance to explore my culture and heritage. I also was informed in the beginning that the trip was originally planned to travel to Italy, France, Normandy, et cetera, and that they had to change it to Ireland and Scotland for our safety, showing both my parents and I that our safety is in the school's best interest, and they would not plan this trip if they did not believe it was safe. Traveling abroad with a group requires each participant to have respect, maturity, patience, and flexibility. I believe that just our actions alone in the promotion of this trip that we possess, show that we possess these qualities. Our diligence to ensure that we get to experience this demonstrates our determination and passion to have this trip run. I thank you for your consideration, and I hope you see how valuable this trip can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
This trip, this trip would allow us to broaden our worldly experiences by interacting with people from other cultures. It would also push all of us out of our everyday comfort zones, as we will be visitors of a different country. We would be able to experience what it's like living in a foreign country, in which most of, if not of all of us, don't have knowledge of the local culture, and it could only happen if we were able to travel abroad. Personally, I would like to learn how other nations view us as American citizens, as well as traveling to Ireland, because I'm also Irish. And it would be important to be, it's important to understand that with different perspectives comes seeing other, somebody's, like, point of view, and where they're coming from.
Thank you.
Members of the school committee and other elected officials, my name is Rebecca Dunn, I'm seventeen years old and a senior at PB High School. When I first heard the news that there was a potential trip to Ireland and Scotland, I was ecstatic. Not only would I be able to immerse myself in the culture of my Irish ancestors, but I would also be given the educational experience of a lifetime. The dangers of traveling abroad did not even cross my mind as I began searching the amazing itinerary EF Tours had organized. According to the United States Overseas Advisory Council, or OSAC, Ireland is a very low-threat destination for terrorism, as well as low-threat location for political violence directed at Americans. Scotland, in addition, ranks lower in the United States in drug use, robberies, and serious assaults, as well as having a higher percentage of police per capita. When finding a place to travel on a school trip, you would be hard-pressed to find a destination safer than Scotland and Ireland. Last summer, I had the privilege to travel to Israel for five weeks. Being abroad was one of the most memorable and amazing experiences of my life. As many of you may know, the Middle East is involved in great conflict right now, and traveling there is seen as unsafe. However, those five weeks were the safest I've ever felt in my life. With an experienced tour guide and security guards constantly present, any threat of danger was addressed, and our trip was adapted to keep everyone safe. By taking a trip through EF Tours, we would have a well-trained tour guide that would not only provide the best educational tour for us, but would also be capable of making judgment calls in order to keep us safe abroad. Throughout our high school experience, teachers encourage us to learn about other cultures and maintain a more conscious worldview. The ability to travel to Europe would allow us to put our education into context, allowing us to experience a new perspective on life. Personally, I have a list of over fifteen students who have expressed great interest in traveling with us. This already surpasses the limit of twelve, and that is without any publicity from teachers. This is something all of us are very passionate about, and just by organizing this group, we have proven that we are mature enough to reap the benefits this trip has to offer. Thank you all so much for your time and consideration, and I hope you will agree that the benefits outweigh any potential risks, and that you will vote in favor of allowing us to travel.
Well, thank you to each of you. That was very well done, and I want to commend each of you for coming today.
Sorry, we actually have a few parents that would like to speak on our behalf as well.
Sure, come on over. Why don't you read it right here?
Okay. She had another commitment, so...
Could you just please introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Gail Tringali, and this is for my daughter, Abby Tringali. Members of the school committee, my name is Abby Tringali, and I'm a senior at PB High School. Myself and several other students have been interested in the field trip to Ireland and Scotland since last year, and we're excited to have such an educational experience. However, the recent decision to cancel the trip has left us upset and confused. As seniors, this would be our final chance to embark on an adventure of this scale, with an organization determined to make our experience one of learning, rather than simple tourism. We always see our college friends doing semesters abroad, but that program may not be available in our major or our school. We want an experience like that, where we can see the world and learn in the process, on a smaller scale. You have the power to give us that. Our years at the high school have taught us the values of world citizenship. We've taken foreign language classes, hosted foreign exchange students, and learned about the cultures of other countries in almost all of our classes. This trip would further, excuse me, this trip would further strengthen our worldview and teach us such values as responsibility, safety, and respect, is an incredible opportunity for many of us who have limited access to travel in our own lives. A school-sponsored event such as this would be the perfect way, and for many, the only way, to broaden the horizons of many students who have never left Massachusetts, much less the country. A thousand times over, we've been told by PB public school officials that it's important to learn about new cultures and respect different people. Yet, the decision to cancel the trip is denying us the opportunity to do just that. This trip is a big deal to us, and I implore you to reconsider the cancellation. Thank you, Abigail Tringali.
Thank you, Mrs. Tringali.
Sorry, we have one more.
Yeah, please, Mr. Dunn, come on in. Welcome, sir.
My name is John Dunn, Rebecca Dunn's father. And as a parent of a student who wants to travel to Europe, I can appreciate the board's concern over the safety of our students. I share the concern, but I believe that the acts of terrorists are meant to control people's thoughts through despicable acts for fear. I also believe that recent events have shown us that students are no safer at home than abroad. So terrorism happens everywhere. Of course, travel abroad, we've heard many examples that travel abroad builds independence, competence, maturity, exposes the students to new cultures and ideas, they learn to accept people's differences, rather than be afraid of the differences. They also learn that we're part of a world community, so that all of us are the same, no matter where you go. I think, actually, to deny the students to travel would actually encourage a culture of fear, which is the terrorist's goal. So I think the right call, because the risk, I believe, is low. If you travel abroad, I think the benefits outweigh the risks by a lot. So I ask the board to reconsider the decision, too.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak? Well, I first want to commend each of you for being here today at this meeting, speaking up for yourselves, advocating for what you'd like to have happen. That's important, and we definitely would, wanted to hear that, hear that from you. It's very well said, your presentations. Open it up now to the school committee for any comment. Mrs. Capener, I'll start with you.
Thank you. Thank you, girls, for coming. I appreciate it. Just to explain to people that are in the audience or viewing at home, that this is, the field trip is something that is approved by the superintendent, and at the last school committee meeting, he did not approve this trip, which is his right. As a school committee, we do have the ability to overturn that decision. When that decision was made, some of the girls had reached out to me to ask about it. We've done this before for the Italy trip, and my feelings are the same, that if your parents decide that it's okay for you to go, then, and I feel that you should be able to go. With that being said, you've advocated for yourselves. I highly respect Dr. Levine's opinion, and I do know why he denied it, and I'm hoping that he can explain that to the public and to you, and maybe discuss with you his views, and maybe we can go from there.
Hi, ladies.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. You guys can stay here all night, conduct the rest of the business, and I can go home and watch the Celtics. So, I do want to take this opportunity to get on my soapbox just a little bit. Please bear with me. But at my age, and the fact that I'm retiring, I can pretty much say anything I want, and I intend to. The, the fact that I denied this trip led to a discussion, both online and in person, with both the kids and some of the other kids that I met with the other day, and some of their parents. And I want to talk to the PB community for just a little bit, and particularly to some groups of people who use social media for things other than what I think it was meant to do. You know, on social media, there are people who are just mean, they don't tell the truth, and they couldn't back up a point if their life depended on it. They have no evidence, they have no research. They say whatever they want, they say it about whomever they want, and they get away with it because a lot of it's anonymous. If we want dialogue in this country to be upgraded, we need to take a lesson from these kids, and the way that they handled this situation, in what democracy is supposed to be. Dialogue, civil dialogue. What these kids did was ask for a meeting with me around these issues that they had, and I had already expressed, and I expressed to them in the meeting, that I do fear overseas travel. There is no way that I would ever retreat from mainland, a trip to mainland Europe. And they proceeded to, in very, very sequential terms, with intelligence, with evidence, with research, with courtesy. They began by asking me what I thought and why I thought it. Isn't that a novel idea in this country right now? To actually ask somebody who you may not agree with to please voice their opinion. And I thank you for that. We then entered into a dialogue and discussion about my reasoning, the fact that we lose control over airplanes when they emanate from European capitals or European airports, that I have no way to know how secure a European airport is, that American kids, together in a group, anywhere in Europe, become a target, and just because a place hasn't been attacked doesn't mean that it won't be. I also worry about the lack of communication from any place in Europe if something did happen, as we saw in both Belgium and in France, when terrorist attacks occurred. One of the worst things that, that happened was parents in America being unable to get in touch with their children to see whether or not they were safe. That's a horrible, horrible thing. However, in our dialogue, the kids convinced me that I had not given enough weight to the fact that this was Dublin and Edinburgh, and they actually presented me with evidence based upon research that said that these are two of the safest places on earth regarding terror and even political discord. So I thought about it, and I thought about it, and I actually came to a conclusion this afternoon, that I am going to withdraw my opposition to this trip and allow them to The reason I wanted them here was to explain to the community how well they did a step-by-step democratic process. They had a problem, they had an issue, they learned and they knew how to handle that issue with decency, with dignity, and with a sense of value that is lacking sometimes in America now, today. So, to people who don't understand that, and you know who you are, I'm looking right at you through the camera.[1423.01][1423.01][laughter] Please take a lesson from these kids right here, who represent the very, very best of what we have to offer in a democratic society. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, my goodness.[1445.13][1445.13][laughter] I'm speechless. Okay, we're good.
Good job, girls. Enjoy your trip.
Thank you so much, Dr. Levine.
Thank you so much. Oh, yeah, I will. I'll do that.
Move down one?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to follow a recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
I was waiting for that. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Capener, seconded by everybody? No, not everybody. Mr. Olympio?
We'll be waiting for postcards, Laurie.
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Happy birthday, Mr. Dunn.[1478.33][1478.33][laughter]
Yes.
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 Yes. And thank you, Dr. Levine. What you said was very important.
No, it's good.
Okay. I'd like to go now to presentations, and turn it over to Dr. Levine for an introduction.
Thank you. We have a wonderful and exciting project underway, and it's kind of become the, the, I don't know how to, how to explain it, but it's, it's being taken under, under its wing by Melissa Guanarez from the high school, an art teacher, and Katie Millman, the Art Department Chair, who have been working so hard in, in coordinating this effort district-wide. For the lack of a better term, we call it the mural project, because that's what it is. And I thought it would be important, now that we're at the stage where people are actually working on the project, and supplies have been gotten, and you're going to start seeing soon some of the results of the project, I thought it would be important for our extraordinarily talented art folks, Melissa and Katie, to make a presentation to you as a school committee so that you know what's going on. I know that there were rumors that we were doing outsides of buildings, and with the exception of the Mayor's House, that's not true. So I would like Katie and Melissa to join us, and thank you so much for being here. We're going to go over there, so we can see.
Okay. Now we're official.[1573.51][1573.51][laughter] So Melissa and I are so excited to talk to you about this project, and we thank you for inviting us here this evening so that we could do so, and get everybody up to speed with what exactly is happening. When people hear mural project, they automatically think two-dimensional paint on walls. Well, we're taking a totally different approach to this, because we want to be able to include as many students in the entire district in this project. And so, we are collaborating amongst all the teachers in the district and amongst all the schools to allow students to have as much of a say in a part of this as possible. And we're approaching it from multiple different mediums, so we're going to be incorporating sculpture, ceramics, collage, drawing, painting, photography, and those mediums will all be exemplified in this project. So we kind of broke it down, why, who, when, and where, and the mission is essentially, as I just explained, all our students and teachers of the PB Public Schools are going to work together to create collaborative murals in each building, plus two for the administration building. So every school is going to have a mural installed inside of it. Nothing is going to be outside. And each art teacher in that school is working with the principal to determine where exactly the location is going to be, and that's pretty much been decided for almost every building so far. Why, what's the point of this, is to exemplify how the visual arts are essential part of 21st century learning, and we're also hoping that this becomes part of the culture of PB, and fosters an awareness of the importance of the visual arts in 21st century learning. As I explained, all students and teachers will partake in it, and it's taking place throughout the entire school year. So we're starting now. September through November's pretty much been the planning of it. We've been collaborating at professional development to determine what exactly we're going to do, and we've been ordering supplies with the budget that Jared Stanton has allowed for this project, that none of the materials are coming out of the budgets for teaching our actual classes. Any questions so far? Okay. So we've kind of broken it down and put together ideas for each individual school, starting with the high school. Melissa is going to be creating 3D murals with her ceramics classes, and I will let her explain that.
Oh, you were doing great.[1726.41][1726.41][laughter]
Okay, so... 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 I'm trying to encourage her to maybe put it in a more visible area, but right now she wants it outside of her classroom, so we'll see. Again, to be determined. It's a process. It's ever-evolving and changing as we work. Okay, this is my photo mural. I teach photography, I teach digital and darkroom, and I intend to have my students create David Hockney-inspired photo cubist murals. So if you're uncertain what photocubism is, it's essentially taking the cubist art movement and combining it with photography. So it's taking basically detailed photographs of a place or a person, and then putting many different images together to create a whole. And I've done this several times with my students in the past, but I thought it would be a great opportunity to do this for this project. And essentially, what we're going to do is go around to each of the schools and photograph the outsides of the buildings, and then create a photo cubist collage for each school. And as of right now, we have planned a field trip on November 30th, and what I've done is talked to my students about where they went to elementary school, and if they didn't go to an elementary school at PBDD public schools, some of them went to the Higgins, some of them are now currently at the high school. So they each have a stake in it, and they all have a sense of pride of sort of giving back, like, oh, that's so cool to be able to go back to my elementary school, photograph it, and now create something new today. So that's our plan with that. These collages, we are intending to put in the new administration building. On the big empty wall when you first walk in, if you look up to the left, there's a big empty space. And what we're kind of envisioning is having one of these collages, well, essentially nine of these collages, going from the top, we're starting with the high school, and then working down to each of the elementary schools. And then in the middle, we're thinking of having other students create a road in neighborhoods that would go through PBDD, and we thought that would be a really nice representation of all the schools in the district that could be showcased in the administration building. Again, these are just rough sketches and ideas, but we are in the beginning, planning phases, and we're about to start executing our ideas, and we'll sort of see where we end up at the end of the process, but those are the initial thoughts. Anything else?
This idea is happening. It's going to have to, I already got the giant.
Yeah.
This one's definitely happening.
Yes, okay. The next art teacher is Sarah Steffensmeyer. I took her picture yesterday, and what she is doing is she is framing AP student artwork, and she is going to create a revolving gallery that's going to hang in the administration building again on all the empty walls that right now are just white spaces. Wouldn't it be beautiful to have student artwork displayed there? And so she's thinking of changing the gallery, at least, her goal is four times a year, but I think that's a little ambitious, so maybe at least twice a year, once every semester, putting new artwork in the frame. So essentially, the frames would stay, but different students could have their artwork showcased. And we're even thinking of opening it up to the elementary and middle school students if they have a student of the month, or somebody who's just really worked hard that they want to highlight. So right now, we're just going to start with AP, and then maybe after this year, think about that for the future, having like an artist of the month displayed downtown in the administration building, or artist of the month. Okay, our next art teacher at the high school is Elaine Berry, and she runs the art club, and she's going to be doing more of a traditional mural. She is going to, she's working with art club students to paint, and these are some of their sketches that they've already created. On the bottom left is sort of the vision, and what they want to do is exemplify and show how the high school is the foundation for their future and stepping stones towards their future, in that show the vision and sort of where they started and where they're going to end up. And they want to show the diversity and sort of, just like I said, exemplify the journey. And we're thinking that that mural would be in the front entrance of the school, so right now, as you know, when you walk in the lobby, it's at the high school, it's a little drab, and wouldn't it be nice to have a big, beautiful, bright mural, one of the first things that you see on the wall to the left of what's now the security desk? And those are our thoughts on that. Okay, so in order to include all mediums, Chris Vassar is our TV production teacher, and he is creating a little documentary that's going to showcase the process, and he put together a little clip from our professional development on November 7th last week, I believe was the date. Can you press play? And we don't have volume. That's okay. There is music that went with this. That will be elaborated on, but again, he's going to go around to the elementary schools, the middle school, and document the process of students creating art, the teachers collaborating with the students, and basically put together a documentary film that shows this entire process from the beginning of the school year towards the end of the school year. Jason Lampkin is the new art teacher along with Penny Nelson, and they've decided to collaborate on this idea of exemplifying all the clusters and putting together a three-tiered mural that will go in the front entryway of the school when you first walk in, sort of underneath the stairs, there's a big blank wall there, and this is going to be on plywood. And the bottom of the mural, the bottom tier, will represent the land, animals, sea, and then the constellations at the top to represent all the different clusters within the middle school. This will be approximately six foot by eight foot in dimension, and again, they're going to try to include as many students as possible to have a small piece of the bigger mural that will be created. This will be mixed media, I'm pretty sure. The Brown, we have Carolyn Dexter, who wants to put together a community landscape inspired by the artist Brito, and she wants to show the school and the neighborhood. This is going to be covering an existing bulletin board when you first walk into the school, approximate size is four foot by five foot, and she's worked with the principal at the Brown to determine that. The McCarthy School, Carolyn Dexter again. She thought it would be pretty awesome to have an image like this, spread your wings and fly, when you walk into the school. This would be the first thing you see, and students could stand under there, have their photograph taken, approximate size, five foot by eight foot, mixed media. You can envision many students creating a small piece that, again, would be put together to create a larger whole. The Welch School, Terry Cobb. She wants to do an abstract with geometric squares, focusing on line design, maybe symmetry, warm, cool colors. She wants that to represent the diversity within our schools and our city. She's thinking that she'll create this with mostly fourth and fifth graders, approximately 112 students would be working to put this together, approximate size, four foot by eight foot, and I think this is the one that she was thinking was going to go on the stage of the Welch School, right when you walk in. Burke, we have Terry Cobb again, and this time she wants to do Kandinsky-inspired circles, fourth and fifth graders, using watercolor and other mixed medium materials. Another new art teacher, Alyssa, she works at the Center School, and she's envisioning these silhouettes with cut-out circles that each student would design and create, and this would go on the back of the stage at the Center School, where right now I believe it's a big blank wall. Carol School, Christine Liberty, she wants to do Keith Haring-inspired sculptures, and students would create sort of what you're seeing on the bottom, these little sculptures, people inspired by the artist Keith Haring, very famous pop artist of the 80s. She's had her students right now are learning about him, and they're very excited and love his work, so she's thinking of them each creating a mini sculpture that then would be put together to create something larger sporadically placed, I believe, in a space near the art room of that school. Wes, Deb Petrus, she wants to exemplify students reaching for the stars. Location to be determined there, and she's also at the South. She wants to do puzzle pieces with her students. Location and size to be determined still. Okay, so this is sort of our timeline. As I said, November, September through November, we've been brainstorming and planning. Now we're ready to start making. Some teachers are ready to do that immediately, some teachers need to wait till they get past the holidays, especially at the elementary level, they have some other commitments before they can officially start. And the goal is for everybody to have the murals completed by May 1st, and then May through June, we're going to plan for the reveal and put this date on your calendar, June 3rd. From 12 to 4 p.m. will be the big mural reveal on Railroad Avenue downtown that Melissa has been working with city officials to plan for, and I think you could speak more on that.
Deanne Healy is the president of Chamber of Commerce, and she's working with me to make sure that we have the road blocked off with the officers on each end, and the abutting businesses are aware of the closure, and we'll reach out to the community ahead of time with the save the date, and then as the date approaches, get everyone a lot more excited. We're hoping to have some of the work that the kids create printed on some stuff that we could use for fundraising, so maybe some t-shirts or some mugs or anything we think that could be utilized by the community. If there's three things I love, it's art and the students at the high school and PBDD, so I'm hoping this becomes a big, huge, giant affair where I see all of you there for a few moments at least, and you bring your friends and your family, and we're going to have some food trucks, I know that helps bring in people, and some artists working onsite, so maybe a potter on a wheel, or someone working at an easel painting, or maybe a character artist, or a lot of our students have gone off and gotten degrees in the arts, so we're hoping that some of our alum come back and participate too. Yeah, I would love for this to be a yearly thing or a bi-yearly thing.
Perhaps not a big mural project every year, but perhaps an arts festival every year of some sort. So again, we sort of broke it down, the funding, the collaborating, the communicating, the installation of it. We are not going to be installing it, but I'm assuming some of our custodial and maintenance staff will be working with them to do the actual ladder work and nailing and drilling and screwing or whatever. And like we said, Sunday, June 3rd, has been put on people's calendars as the reveal day. As of right now, it's supposed to be rain or shine, so I've been told that there are tents we can use, and just, you know, hope for the best. And so this brings us to 21st century learning. Why are we doing this? Essentially, it's to promote our relevance and our importance as artists and art teachers within the community, and how we're utilizing these skills in our classes every single day, and I think that this project shows that and is exemplifying our relevance and And I guess, open it up to you. Do you have any questions?
It's such a good job.
Yes.
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is this is awesome, and I'm very impressed. And one other comment is I do hope that it's something that we can do and promote art throughout the school district, and to showcase students and their abilities on an annual basis, I think this would be amazing.
Yeah, we have some amazingly talented students who have gone on to use their skills. You know, maybe they don't necessarily become professional painters, but they use the skills that they've learned through these experiences for other avenues in their life.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Okay. Thanks for having us.
Katie?
Yes.
You can go first, go ahead.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. Yeah, wonderful. I couldn't agree anymore, Mr. Razignol. Exciting to see visual arts on display. There have been projects that have taken place around the city already, not necessarily through the high school, that have enhanced the neighborhoods within our city, and I'm looking forward to the work that you guys do.
Great.
I would ask that, if I may, if you're going to do a mural of the neighborhoods or the cityscape or whatever it looks like around our neighborhood, elementary schools, that it be representative. Not all kids in our city live in single-family houses.
Yep.
We live in mobile homes.
Definitely.
We live in high-rise buildings.
Yes.
We live in multifamily buildings, so if I can ask for that, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. I think that's a very important point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. and Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you. I think this project is wonderful. You do a fabulous job with the art. One of the nicest, one of the nicest events anyone can go to every year is at the high school. It's the art exhibit where the students showcase all of the things that they've worked on, and it is amazing to see the projects and the variety of artwork. And I know, you know, at the elementary level, there's an exhibit every year down at the library where their work is put up, and it's really nice to see that, to see the different interpretations that each of those students have on whatever the theme was. But I think this is really going to be even, even more important because a lot of times those exhibits, even though, you know, at the library, it's in a public place, the public doesn't always know to go to these events or to see the work of the students. So doing this in such a public way and having the big reveal, I think that is just a phenomenal idea, and I honestly, I can't wait to see what you all come up with because those sketches are amazing, the ideas are great, and I think the kids are going to learn a lot and have a lot of fun with it, but I think our whole city is going to have huge benefits from this, so thank you.
And just a sense of pride that so many students will have partaken in something so much larger than them, I think is really exciting.
Really is.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Miko?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you for doing this. This is another great example of the great things that our teachers and students are doing to showcase their talents that definitely won't be shown on a test of any magnitude, so I just love this, and I just want to thank you for doing this.
You're welcome. That's what we do. It's promote self-confidence in students as well.
So I just want to lend my support for this and my enthusiastic support for this project. This is terrific. You know, Mrs. Millman, I've been to your class and seen the great work taking place, and Melissa, you know, you and the artists in the city have just done a tremendous job. Mr. Hockman mentioned about some of our utility boxes and other things just around the city. I really feel that that adds a lot to our community. We've actually started to look at other opportunities for public art as well, and some storefronts and things of that nature. I think you two promoting this in this manner with the event coming in June will really even take it to another level. So I just want to thank you both for the work you provide the city and showing off the great artists that we have in our community, so thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Great job.
Yes, this was Dr. Levine's idea. He came to us in September and said, "I want you to do murals." We're like, "All right, give us an assignment and we will fulfill it."
We're not letting him anywhere near these.
No, but I have told us, told him he could come in any time and we could teach because you're not born knowing how to make art, as you're not born knowing algebra. You have to study and learn and practice just like anything else. So, maybe in retirement. Come on in as a visitor.
One question.
Oh, Mrs. Coppola?
Yes.
Who drew Chewie? That's great. Did Dr. Levine do that one?
That's a self-portrait.
The kids would love this one hanging in the store. These are fabulous.
Dr. Levine can't even carry tablets down from a mountain.
Thank you very much.
I would like to just end with, by saying thank you to two very hard-working, talented people. Thank you so much for doing this.
You're welcome.
And what is going to wind up, to Mrs. Dunn's point, we're going to be able to showcase the talents of the kids that we have in this district and their teachers in a way that music easily does. You know, it's easy for us to go to a musical, it's easy for us to go to songs that are being sung at the holidays. These are the notes of the art department, all of the things that you draw, and the so many different mediums that you're involved in helping the kids make for the city. It's going to be a tremendous event in the spring. I look forward to it, and again, I can't thank you guys enough. You took this thing and made it yours, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right. And we got the slide projector to work. That was, that was amazing. Collaboration that. Collaboration that.
That's not one of my talents either.
Okay, we're going to go back to the agenda, and we'll go to continued business. Before we go to continued business, I did want to recognize and congratulate Mr. Andrew Arnotice, who's here today. He's a school committee member-elect, and he's been at our, all of our meetings recently, as well as the interviews for the superintendent candidates. And congratulations and welcome, Mr. Arnotice. Nice to have you here. So with that, we'll go to continued business. Our first item is the MSBA Higgins Project. Mrs. Dunn, do you have any new report to make?
Just a quick report, Mr. Chairman. The monthly meeting of the Higgins School Building Committee will take place this Thursday here at Higgins at 4:00 p.m. Those meetings are always open to the public. The project really is winding down. We will be getting some reports on completion of specific phases of the conclusion of the project, as well as a report. Many people have, if they drive through the school to drop off children, they've seen a big puddle that existed out back behind the new athletic fields. And that is actually being addressed. It should be taken care of very shortly. The drainage on the project needed to have silt sacks installed on the storm drains. That's to prevent the storm drains from being backed up with any of the silt that may come off of areas that we've recently seeded. The area where the puddle exists, it will be cleared once we're allowed to take out those silt sacks. The engineer on the project has given the okay, examined the entire site, and determined that those can come off very soon. So our goal is to have those removed, especially at this time of year, because we don't want water collecting there with the freezing temperatures that have already arrived. We don't want any problems there. It's not a very deep puddle, but it ended up covering the entire surface of one spot on the road. And in the mornings, people were hesitant to drive through it. It wasn't very deep, but it was intimidating, and it's merely because of those silt sacks. So once they're out, that project should be alleviated, I'm sorry, that problem should be alleviated, and we should be good to go with our drainage system. We'll be addressing a few other items at that meeting and hope to have final reports over the next couple of months. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for that report. Next item is superintendent search. I'd like to give an update and then open it up for discussion. We have conducted superintendent search specifically with five interviews of finalists. And I have to say, it was an outstanding crop of candidates. We interviewed two last Wednesday, November 8th. Those two candidates were Dr. John Perella, who is the headmaster for the Medford Public Schools, Medford High School, and Dr. Susan Cuska, who was the assistant superintendent of Waymouth. Yesterday, last evening, we interviewed three additional candidates. The first was Mr. Sean Gallagher, who's the assistant superintendent for the town of Wilmington, Dr. Alexandra Montez McNeil, who is the instructional, who is an instructional superintendent for the Boston Public Schools, and Mr. Karen Murtagh, the assistant superintendent here in PBD. Each of the candidates had about an hour to an hour and a half interview. All of the school committee members were present for those and asked questions. We covered a wide range of topics, getting to know the candidates, their background, learning about their vision for PBD, learning about their experiences in collective bargaining, budgets, special education, a whole variety of topics. And I was thrilled with the quality of candidates that we had. The five finalists are outstanding as far as I was concerned, and I think all of you share that feeling. I did want to thank and recognize Glenn Kuchar and Mike Gilbert from the Mass Association of School Committees. We did have 16 applicants originally for the position of superintendent, and upon their recommendation, we moved forward with the interview of those five. Today, I wanted to open it up for discussion as to the next steps for us. All of the candidates have been interviewed and just waiting for direction as to the next move we want to make as a district. So I wanted to open that up for discussion with the school committee members, and I'd like to do so now. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo your sentiments with regard to the quality of the pool of candidates who we had the opportunity to interview over the course of the last week. I was intrigued by some, I was intrigued by some of their credentials on paper. I appreciated their time and commitment to appearing before us. I was disappointed with some of the interviews. I was excited about some of the interviews. And it leads me back to the thought that I had going into the interviews and have at the conclusion of the interviews, and that is that our assistant superintendent, someone that I've worked with closely for the last five years as an assistant superintendent and three years prior to that as a principal at one of our elementary schools, is a highly talented, highly qualified, and engaging person. Someone who I believe is capable of leading this school district to great things. I believe that she's worked as our assistant superintendent with a focus on curriculum, staff development, and instruction. She's led our district to textbook adoptions. She's led our district into remedial measures to move out of a Level III status, as has been assigned by the, as a result of MCAS scores at our high school. She's someone that I know personally, works 20-plus hours a day, has a love, compassion, and commitment to the city of PBD, someone who leads by including others. I see her constantly talking to staff members from principals to teachers, to paraprofessionals, to crossing guards, to custodial staff in the same manner, with the same tone, with the same dignity and the same respect. She's a person that I believe is prepared to take on this job, and I move that we ask the mayor, the chairperson of this school committee, to enter into negotiations with Karen Murtagh to be the next superintendent for the PBD Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. It's in the form of the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miko, thank you. You've seconded the motion. Open that up for discussion. Mr. Olympio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honestly, I echo a lot of the sentiments that Mr. Hockman just spoke about. What impressed me yesterday, last night with Ms. Murtagh is the questions that she answered. She answered a lot of tough questions. They weren't the variety cookie cutter, background type of questions. They were tough, in my opinion, and she seemed to handle it really without skipping a beat. She showed confidence. You know, one thing that, you know, that I looked at when she was answering the questions was she acknowledged areas of concern. I liked her answer when it pertained to the high school. She knows what's been working and what needs to be changed in the district. And also too, I judge, you know, somebody by how do they react when there's adversity? And she's been assistant superintendent for the past six years. Her first three or four years wasn't, couldn't have been all roses. There was a lot of turmoil, this school committee, and certainly Mr. Charison, Mr. McGeehan before me, they had to make a lot of tough decisions. And she was there, working through it all and keeping a great attitude. And, you know, those are the things, it's easy to do well when everything's going great, but to kind of work through things when things aren't so comfortable and still have that attitude and that great work ethic and that fire in the belly that she has, really, every time I see her. There's been many of nights where I'll be driving around, and when we had the administrative offices at the Kylie, I would see one car on weekends and nights in the parking lot, and it was her car. And this is the stuff that people don't see. They don't, it doesn't get in the papers. It's not talked about on social media. And, you know, those are the things that matter to me. Again, it's easy to, you know, when, let's say a district is at Level 1, it's easy when everything's going great. But when you face adversity, do you back down or do you keep trying harder and trying to fix things that need to be fixed? And that's really what I got from her interview yesterday, last night, and it really, you know, impressed me with how she handled those questions. And she didn't take offense to anything. She just had a great attitude. And again, you know, it hasn't always been easy working in the district, and she, really, her attitude has not changed. I would imagine maybe some of the other members can speak to that from day one, but I've been working with her for a couple of years, and it's always with a smile and a great attitude. And I do think that she's going to, you know, make some changes and, you know, things that might not be working. So that really gave me the confidence when I saw her, you know, answer some of the questions. So that's kind of where I stand.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Any other comments? Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the chair of the committee. I agree with Mr. Hockman, obviously, and so Olympio, that was well said. Thank you. When Mr. Kuchar was here a couple of weeks ago, he said that the five candidates, more than likely, all five, will be superintendents at some point. And I believe that as well. And that's why I also believe that what Ms. Murtagh did last night in handle those questions almost with ease, as far as I'm concerned, that just goes to show you how qualified she really is for this position. Some of the quotes that really stood out to me as I took some notes was, obviously, when she said, "Every student, every day." And that's not just a quote, it's not a saying, it's what she does every day. That's what she believes in. She believes that she can make a difference every day. The other one was when she was asked about making mistakes. I think Mr. Olympio asked her that question. I'm not sure, but she said, "I make mistakes and I own my mistakes." And that is a, that's a true leader right there. I think with this motion and with us moving forward on this, I think the children of PBD win, the parents of PBD win, and I think PBD wins as well. It's a great choice.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. On the motion, Mr. Rozignol asked a terrific question, I think, of each of the five candidates, and that was, what's your, I believe it was a three-month, six-month, and one-year entry plan? We have a unique opportunity here where that doesn't, there's a seamless transition that takes place. But more than a seamless transition, we have an opportunity here on November 14th to hire Karen Murtagh as, or enter into negotiations at least, with Karen Murtagh to be our next superintendent before we start our budget process, before we start the union negotiations that are going to take place, to give her an opportunity to mold those documents, to be a participant in those documents, to work, continue to work under the guidance and tutelage of Dr. Levine for six months, but not as solely an assistant superintendent, but with an eye on being the superintendent elect heir, heir, I don't know the proper term for that. But with that lens, and no other candidate that was before us is going to give us that opportunity. So for the reasons that I stated in making the motion, the reasons I just stated, and I can probably talk for another hour on the reasons why I think Karen Murtagh is the right choice for this job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mrs. Copeland?
Thank you. So I want to just say that the batch of candidates we got, the five finalists that we interviewed the last two weeks, I will say is probably one of the best batches of candidates I've ever seen in the 10 years I've been on the school committee and the few candidates, few superintendents that I've had to hire. I was highly impressed. I, you know, those resumes were, they just blew me away. With that being said, Kara does have a little something extra. She knows this district, she knows the kids. I appreciate her work ethic. I would love for her to be the next superintendent. I will expect great things from Kara. There is a lot of work to be done. I am hopeful that she can do it. And the other four candidates that came before us, I would love to see them come to us in some way, and if they don't, I'm sure we will see all four of them become a superintendent somewhere very soon. So I would agree that Ms. Murtagh would make a good superintendent for PBD.
Thank you, Mrs. Copeland. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be honest, I had come tonight anticipating, asking for a second round of interviews with, and Ms. Murtagh would have been on that list with another one of the candidates. I agree with my colleagues, the candidates we had before us were outstanding, and every one of them brought a very special, a very special background to the position of superintendent. And Ms. Murtagh brings an additional quality, which people are all touching on that. Her ability to allow us to have a seamless transition, her absolute dedication, which every one of us has witnessed, even you, Mr. Mayor, when you asked that question you had asked of everyone about what do you do to relax and take time, you even noted that we all know Ms. Murtagh works 28 hours a day. Her dedication to the school district has been immeasurable because she has dealt with some very difficult situations that our system has gone through. So she has learned under fire. She has a vast wealth of experience as an assistant superintendent, which actually is something that throughout this entire search last year and this year has been very important to me. I appreciate the fact that she and the other, several of the other candidates had worked their way up from being a teacher to fulfilling various steps on the ladder of movement towards superintendency. And I think everyone here is in agreement that she has been an amazing person to work with, a wonderful assistant superintendent, and I do believe she will be an outstanding superintendent. We are going to have to help her, this whole district is, because we all need to move forward. We need to really push forward. I like the direction our district's going in, but we need to accelerate that and really work hard. And I think that if we can all do that and work as a team, that our school system will know no bounds.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay. We have a motion on the table. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I propose we take a two-minute break?
Yes.
Yeah, where is Ms. Murtagh?
She had to leave.
Oh, no, she'll come back.
Oh, no, she'll come back.
This is, this is the copy with all the answers in it. I want to thank you all for sending me down as delegate and allowing me to attend the conference. As always, it was extremely informative. It was unfortunately not as well attended as in past years because of the election. And normally, when you go to the conference for the delegate assembly, MASCE represents 351 school districts or cities and towns. So there are usually 250, 300 seats in the grand hall where you go in to sit and prepare to vote. When we took votes, it was really striking, there were probably 90 to 100 delegates there. And they acknowledged, it was the timing, it was the only time they could have had it, but they really were affected by elections. So they'll be looking into their, you know, watching that for the plans for future years. The packet in front of you are the resolutions which will form the focus of MASCE for the next year. And it's always interesting, the very first vote, there's all kinds of things happening and discussions and differences of opinion. And on this one, the very first resolution, I'm not going to read these, but I will tell you, if you look down, therefore be it resolved, that the purpose of Resolution One was movement of the Chapter 70 funding enrollment date to March 15th. And it was a very interesting discussion because, as we know, your enrollment dates are determined on October 1st. But what happens with the Chapter 70 funding date, that creates a problem because after October 1st, students will come into the district, and then you are at a deficit on your funding per pupil, per pupil amounts. The recommended language was MASCE file for and support legislation that will implement the movement of the Chapter 70 funding enrollment date to March 15th. Sounded great, but it's a huge problem for towns and regional schools. So listening to that discussion really was fascinating. The amendment, which did pass on a voice vote, was to change the enrollment date from March 15th to January 31st. And how they arrived at that was interesting as well. It was really a compromise between cities and towns, and they had a lot of really good information in there. So examples from other communities where they were talking about the differences, it can result in a 5% difference in some school districts' funding. Arlington specifically spoke about 5%. So that passed on a voice vote with the amendment. Resolution Two was reform of the circuit breaker funding. And as we know, there are always difficulties with the circuit breaker funding for special education because the circuit breaker includes a provision that only allows districts to claim for extraordinary relief when claimable special education costs exceed 125% of the year's claimed costs. What the rationale is, having looked at an in-depth report, between 2006 and 2012, special education costs in Massachusetts increased by 56% compared to 36% for all public education. And that's resulting in shortfalls in funding to all of the communities in the state of Massachusetts. So the recommended resolution, which did pass unanimously, was the MASCE will file for and support legislation that will support the provision of reform for circuit breaker funding and support the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. This year, a lot of these resolutions refer back to the Foundation Budget Review Commission. And it's really a very well-done document. The next resolution, Resolution Three, is litigation for fair school finance. And what this is, and it was approved on a voice vote, I think it was unanimous, to be perfectly honest. No, I'm sorry, it wasn't, there was a bit of difference. The resolution is authorizing MASCE to expend funds to participate in litigation, much in the line of the McDuffie case, which was a funding case, and then in the Hancock case. They are now being authorized to go again to fight for equitable funding for public schools in Massachusetts. All the research, all of the data has shown that Massachusetts does not pay enough for education. And pursuant to the original McDuffie case, the finding was, yes, Massachusetts doesn't pay enough. Hancock, the Hancock case was instituted in order to force that funding. The Hancock case actually lost at the, I'm trying to think, at the Supreme Judicial Court, but they left the door open. The judicial, Supreme Court was relying on the McDuffie case. It really said everything. And they left that door open for legislation. So if a third case comes up with MASCE involved in that, what they will be seeking is further litigation to force state government to acknowledge the actual costs of education and to fund that. And again, it goes back to that, to the, the net school funding provisions. So that was approved. Resolution Four, which is privatization of public education and oversight of public schools, including small and regional districts. This unanimously passed. This resolution is to prevent the Department of Education, the Commissioner, or the Board of Elementary Ed, or the Secretary of Education from forcing districts to consolidate. It's a provision to maintain local control over the schools. It's becoming a problem across the state, but especially out in the western part of Massachusetts, where many of those school districts aren't being given a choice, they're being actually forced to consolidate, and they're not being able to have control over their own destiny, where they may be able to consolidate services or transportation contracts. There are a lot of different ways that they're trying to deal with cost-cutting measures or just efficiency measures. But DESE is meddling and trying to say, no, you have to do this. And we all know what happens when DESE meddles. So that one unanimously passed. Number Five, the use of federal funds. This resolution was a really interesting discussion. This is, it passed on a voice vote, and the resolution states, MASCE urges the legislature to restrict the ability of the Commissioner, Secretary of Education, or Board of Elementary Education to take for its own purposes or used by, used by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, such as but not limited to administrative overhead of the state agency, any share of funds dispersed by the federal government under ESSA, the Perkins Vocational Technical Education Act, or programs under the oversight of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and further directs that those funds be directed specifically to schools and school districts. There are provisions in many of the federal funds that allow the Department of Education to take a share of those funds for administrative costs. And DESE can take from 20, from 2% to 20% of those funds that are actually earmarked for the schools. And as the money gets tighter and tighter, everyone is fighting over that money. So that's one of the things that they're going to be advocating for. It was a really interesting discussion. It was something I hadn't realized. Because I know here at our level, when we see grants come in, there is money that has to go to administration of that program in our district. But when you look at the scale at the state level, it was amazing to see the amount of money that can be diverted to the administrative costs for Department of Ed when that money is really meant for classrooms and teachers. So that one passed. And then Resolution Six on the foundation budget. This is, again, it discusses the Foundation Budget Review Commission and its report. The MASCE directive is to go in to request that the legislature enact the recommendations of the foundation budget into law, and that the commission reconvene to conduct further deliberations and make further recommendations, and that there will be recommendations toward overall accuracy of the adequacy of the overall foundation budget. That's going to be really interesting because right now, they say there is a gap of $2.1 billion. So they were really interested in that. And then Resolution Seven. This one, if you look down below, now therefore be it resolved. This concerns the Affordable Care Act and Medicaid. And what the resolution is seeking is for the legislature to require that 100% of Medicaid reimbursements to cities and towns be provided in full amount to the public schools of each municipality to underwrite the cost of providing an adequate education. There was an amendment made, and the very first paragraph of that resolution was struck by vote because that paragraph was to direct Congress to do something. MASCE does not direct Congress, they can, I'm sorry, not that they direct Congress, but that it was above the, above the authority of MASCE, they wanted to have that legislatively addressed at the state level. This will probably go to the National School Board Association for further action, but for Massachusetts, the membership and all the delegates felt that that first paragraph was unnecessary and to stick with dealing with our legislature. So those are the seven resolutions, which, again, they will guide MASCE in the upcoming year. When you go to Day on the Hill, those resolutions are the things that you advocate for and speak with the representatives and senators, and you'll hear presentations on those. And this is really the strategic plan for the year and what they're going to work on. So again, it was a great experience. That was just one day of a four-day conference. There were a lot of classes, I will tell you. I concentrated on classes about bringing in a new superintendent. You know, there's all kinds of great information, and I'll bring it forward as we progress through this process. But they had some really interesting classes. I attended a couple of others that were of great interest. I have all kinds of, all kinds of things, you know, all the vendors come to those, and they have all kinds of things for education. And I will distribute them through you, Dr. Levine, to the appropriate, you know, people. They had things for the business manager, they had things for the facilities manager, and, you know, a lot of interesting stuff. I also wanted to let you know that at that, at that conference, that I was very happy to attend the delegate dinner, and our colleague from Salem, Brendan Walsh, was nominated and accepted. and accepted to become a lifetime member of MASC. And Brendan is not running for reelection in Salem, he'll be stepping down. He has been a wealth of information over the past, oh, gosh, I think 12 years for me, and great person to talk to, lots of experience. And Brendan was the Chair of Division One at MASC. And I was asked, and I did accept, and was nominated and elected to be the new Chair of Division One for MASC, so I'll be representing PBD. Thank you. And we have a lot of, they do a lot of great educational projects for all the communities. Division One stretches pretty much Essex County and Middlesex County, you know, up to the New Hampshire border, and works in conjunction with the other 10, 10 divisions. PBD's a member of three. We're a member of Division One by virtue of where we are located. We're a member of Division, oh my goodness, I want to say nine, because we are considered an urban school district as well. And then we are also a member of the vocational division because of our membership at the regional school. So, wealth of information, wealth of trainings, lots of great speakers, so be prepared. I know where you all live. We'll be having events in Division One for all the communities around, and it will always help with, with district governance and with moving us forward. I also have something that I'm not going to present tonight. I really would like to put it into your packet for you. This was really interesting. You get all kinds of stuff at this conference. This is a document from the Quincy School Committee, and it's very interesting. It's about the MCAS examination, talks about the electronic version and the downfalls on, on some aspects of it. Really interesting, and I think you'll all want to read it, and then if we could, we could discuss it at our next meeting. It's, it's, it's deep. There's a lot of information here, so I, it needs to go into the packet for you to be able to take a look at it, to read it. But it was, it was awesome. Mr. McGinnis would love this. So, I thank you all again, and we're looking forward to a good year with MASC.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. That was an excellent report, and I know we all greatly appreciate your presence at those meetings informing us of what's taking place. And, you know, to be recognized is really a tribute to the work that you've done over the years. To be recognized by your colleagues and peers is wonderful, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, behalf of the, behalf of us as your school committee members. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
It was really a great experience.
Okay. Public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? The microphone is open. And seeing no one, we'll go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Levine, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I really don't have much of a report except what's in the packet. I thought you'd be interested in the lunch and breakfast comparisons of surrounding cities and towns, and I want to thank Jared for putting that together for us. And if there's any questions on that, certainly feel free to ask. But I would like a vote on the two field trips. If I could, the varsity hockey trip to Marlboro, 12-2 and 12-3, I would ask for a vote to approve that trip, please.
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Rosengold, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. A roll call, roll call vote for approval of the varsity hockey field trip?
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
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 Abstain?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like a positive vote on the annual music trip to Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, 426 to 429.
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
You've heard the motion for approval of the PBD High School music trip to Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, made by Mr. Rosengold, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
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 Abstain?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And before I turn the microphone back over to you, I'd like to congratulate Kara Murtagh. I can think of no one better qualified and more ready and more deserving to serve as superintendent of schools for the PBD Public Schools. So, congratulations to you, and I'm still in charge.
That's true, actually. Yeah, that's true.
Is it a December 1 start date?
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I believe you fired him before.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Next item, we'll go to written communications. We have none for this meeting.
I did have a question on the school lunches.
Oh, okay. School lunches.
Back the bus up.
Back at it. Mrs. Dunn?
When, when I had requested it, it was just to see if we, if we need to adjust any of our prices. So, actually, this was wonderful, Mr. Stanton. Thank you very much. Could we put it back to Mr. Stanton to come forward with, I know you'd need to meet with the head of the cafeteria, but could you come back to us with a recommendation as to whether any of those prices need to be adjusted? Because, again, I think those prices have been in place for a while, and I know costs have gone up. And I know, you know, we're trying everything possible to improve the, the meals for the students and just our whole food service office. So, if you, I'll make a motion that it, go back to Mr. Stanton to come back after he consults with the head of the food services some more.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman. All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay, we'll now go to subcommittee reports. Started off with Education Subcommittee. Anything to report, Mr. Hockman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It seems like it was a long time ago that we had the subcommittee meeting, but it was only last Monday. The Education Subcommittee had a really wonderful meeting. Actually, it might have been one of my favorite subcommittee meetings in the eight years I've been on this board. We met with the Biology Department at the high school, including the department head, George Hyatt. And we talked about the textbook adoption, we talked about, talked about the curriculum, the new curriculum that's in place. And they were all so excited as teachers, both with the textbook adoption, with the support that they're receiving from the publisher of the textbook, with the professional development that's been afforded to them by the district. They did talk about the implementation of the curriculum and the textbook, with the ability to have online learning, have text, learning through the textbook and the classroom instruction. They talked about being able to manipulate the applications of the online and textbook to meet the needs of all of their students, from CP2 all the way up to AP. They talked about being able to do that within a classroom and being able to provide different levels of instruction for, during the same period of teaching by providing different manipulatives to students within the classroom. They were excited to continue to learn. They, they talked about that there's so much content within the textbook that they're still learning and still growing with the textbook, which I thought was, which I thought was fantastic. They did ask, you know, we did ask them what we could do to support them some more, in addition to the multiple millions of dollars that I think Ms. Murta, Ms. Dunn asked the mayor for earlier. They did, they did ask, or they did state a need for more common planning time. They did talk about a desire to have some vertical articulation, have some time to plan or, or consult with science teachers in the Higgins, so that they can better, better suit their, the needs of the high school students, particularly as they arrive in Biology, which is a freshman, typically a freshman class at the high school. So, I thought it was a very exciting meeting. They were, four teachers and a department head were all excited to be here from 6:00 to 7:00 PM to talk to a couple of school committee members, three school committee members. Mr. Rosengold and Mr. Amico were present with me, and I just, I took a lot of good out of that meeting.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Hockman. Finance Subcommittee, Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you. So, I'm happy to report that we do have a date set to meet with Unit A for our first negotiation session, which will be December 5. In your packet, we also have a request from ASME to begin negotiations, and we are in the process of picking a date with them in November, and we'll get back to you once that's settled. We also have in your packet three Unit B job descriptions. This is something that was discussed during the last round of contract negotiations, and if you have any questions about them, you can talk to Dr. Levine. So, would you like to describe them?
I would, thank you. During budget negotiations, we, we spoke about creating these three jobs in place of an Assistant Director for Special Education. We thought we would go this way. We are able to pay for these increased stipends through grants, and so it doesn't cost the district any money from the operational funds. We have all recognized that one of the challenges that we face, especially at the high school regarding Level Three, will be some of our most challenged groups of students. We feel that by creating these job descriptions, these jobs, and redefining how special education is done over the next couple of years, this is not a one-year thing, it's a two- or a three-year process, including the adoption of co-teaching, which you adopted, Forrest, during the budget, that we will get better performance from our kids, better instruction, and actually better structure. So, this is the beginning of that process. It's actually the second step of that process, from the co-teaching to these job creations. And next year, in the budget, as we move forward, we do believe that we will be presenting you a, a new structure at the high school for teaching special education as well, that will include the kind of teaching that we're doing at the elementary. So, it's on our, it's on our radar, it's a target of ours, and no matter how well other kids do at the high school regarding Level Two, because we do have a substantial number of kids who would be in the Level Two category, we cannot move out of Level Three unless we move our groups that are pretty challenged right now. ELL made wonderful progress this year, but not enough to get us out of Level Two if they were a standalone, but very close. Special education needs some more work, and this is all part of that, that vision. So, I would ask you to approve these three job descriptions, so that we can appoint these positions.
Mrs. Carpenter, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the through, the three Unit B job descriptions that are listed in your packet.
Okay. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on the, second one, the Lead IEP Team Chairperson. When, when you read through it, the job goal is act as facilitator and chair of IEP Teams. When you get into the performance responsibilities, it says coordinate and supervise middle school team activity. So, I'm just wondering if that job title just needs to include middle school in it or not?
We would prefer that it didn't be that specific, but it's likely a, a middle school position that will be appointed. This job will help in the coordination of grades five, six, and in the coordination of grades eight, nine. So, we're very pleased in the way that this job description has been written. By the way, I failed to mention, and I want to thank Karen McGovern in Unit B, we had two negotiation sessions around these job descriptions, and we came to a meeting of the minds with some changes and edits. They were very cooperative, and I want to thank them for that.
Thank you, Dr. Levine.
On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Dr. Levine. Thank you for your work with Ms. McGovern in creating the language for these positions. In the Lead IEP Team Chairperson description, paragraph 17, there's a catch-all. Assume other duties as directed by the Administrator of Special Education. And that catch-all is not present in either of the other two job descriptions. Is there any rationale for that?
Actually, there isn't. It's, it's an assumption. Yeah, it's, it's an assumption.
So, rather than to deal with an assumption, can we, can we include that language in all three job descriptions?
Sure.
So, we have a motion in front of us. Any further comments? Hearing none? So, we would make that with that approval?
With that addition, yeah.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the committee.
That is all.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Schools, that was a second by Mrs. Dunn. School safety, Mr. Olympia?
Anything to report?
Thank you. Athletics and wellness, Mr. Rosengold?
Nothing to report under athletic and wellness, but through you to Dr. Levine, in our packet for next meeting, could you have the draft regarding an excused absence allowance for students to attend a college graduation or a non-service graduation? We have yet to vote on it. If you could just have that in our packet for next meeting?
Sure.
I'd appreciate that.
Did I share the draft? Okay. So, I'll have that in the packet. Okay, fine. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosengold. Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually want to apologize. Work needed to be done in response to public comments and a situation revolving around pay-to-ride on the buses. And actually, I have the policies with me, but would like to have a meeting of the subcommittee with further information from Ms. Brejnehan. Specifically, what I'm looking for is the number of potential riders in that same type of situation, just because I think before the board makes a full vote on any, any type of a change with our current policy on the bus service and especially the pay-to-ride, that we have all those facts and figures in front of us. A change could be a huge, a huge impact on our budget. And I think we need to get some more, some more details before we can bring that to this committee as a whole. So, I would like to ask if it could be put on, that topic could be put on for the next school committee meeting, I think it's the 28th, and we'll have all those details to you by then.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. And I'll notify those parents and residents that did come to the meeting to let them know that we're on for that date.
Mr. Mayor, just a question to the Chair of that subcommittee. Are we going to have a subcommittee meeting before the next school committee meeting? Are you? Okay.
Yes, to come out with the recommendation.
It'll be right, it'll be prior to the regular meeting on that evening.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. City Council Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn, anything to report?
Just that the parent advisory board meeting for November will take place on November 27th, and it will take place here at the Higgins at 7:00 PM. Our hope is to have a representative from the Food Services come to speak with the parents about different questions they have and about updates on the new menus and what's going on with the food and the point of sale.
Great. Thank you. Building and grounds, Mr. Amico?
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Special education parent advisory board, Mr. Olympia?
Yes, so, we met, I know, it seems like a lifetime ago. We met Monday, November 6th. Ms. Dunn, Mr. Amico are present, along with Mr. Hockman, Mr. Rosengold. Things that we discussed was, some of the parents brought up that for a couple of days at the Higgins, there weren't enough paras. I guess maybe some people were calling out sick, and there wasn't any subs available. So, it was a little concern of that, but that sense has been rectified. So, they just made mention of that, and let's see, a couple of other things was, also too, with, as it pertains to the Higgins, there are some, when the children come to the Higgins, there are some kids in the district that, at the elementary school level, they haven't been exposed to special ed children in their particular elementary schools. And I think it'd be a nice idea, maybe at the beginning of the school year, that we have some type of presentation or some type of speaker that can maybe talk to the kids as a whole, and to bring more awareness that, especially like sixth graders, that, you know, there are some kids, you know, that have special needs and disabilities. And I think it'd be a nice thing, you know, for us to maybe take a look at going forward, because, again, there's some elementary schools in the district that really the children aren't exposed to special needs children. I think that will help with the transition, and it'll help with some of the anxiety that parents feel about their children coming to the Higgins. They worry about things like bullying and, you know, how they're looked upon with other children. So, that was something that was talked about, and I told them that, you know, we would look into that. And then another issue came up was, you know, the different programs with And then another issue came up was, you know, the different programs with special ed as it relates to general ed kids, like choices programs, and there was something called zones of regulations that a parent brought up. And I know Mr. Amico said down the road in a few years that it'll be required by most districts to have those types of programs, but in the meantime, there's some things that we can do, you know, before we have to implement those types of regulations. So, those were some of the things that was talked about. I plan on setting up a meeting for December 5 at 7 o'clock at the Higgins, and that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Olympia. On that report, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. On the subject of introducing children to other children with differences and special needs, I just want to mention, and I'm not sure if it's still relevant, and Dr. Levine, you might want to look into it. Many years ago, Kathy G. Melis had written a curriculum, and it was to introduce children to other children who are different, who have different needs than they do. She presented it to the Special Education Subcommittee at the time. She had a partner in it, and I'm very sorry that I forget her name, but it was completed, it was done, and it was to be introduced to the PBD Public Schools. I don't know where that fell, but it's exactly what you were discussing. I saw it, it was probably about 10 years ago, and I'm not sure where it went, but if that's something that you're interested in, I know there's probably many other curriculums out there like that, but one of our own PBD teachers wrote it, and it was wonderful. So, if you wanted to reach out to her?
We will, absolutely.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Thank you, Mr. Olympia. I did have one item I wanted to bring forward today. It was an executive session meeting we had prior to our last meeting. We had, at that point, discovered that we had officially never ratified or voted on Dr. Levine's contract as superintendent for this school year, and I wanted to bring that forward. There was a motion made at that time to approve Dr. Levine's contract for this 2017-2018 school year at $168,400, and I just wanted to bring that forward for a vote.
Don't all jump on it at once.
He's already here.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Oh, on the motion?
On the motion.
No, no.
Two superintendents in one night.
Oh, we should have.
We'll hit the blogs for sure.
Yeah. I'm going to be a favor.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great. Thank you. Next item, new business. Mrs. Dunn, I'll turn this over to you. Cursive writing.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason that I put this on our agenda is because I have had many questions from people about what we do in our curriculum for cursive writing. And there is a lot of research out there about the benefits of cursive writing and also about how cursive writing is falling out of favor based upon the fact that so many students now text, use computers, they, you know, they're all working with print. And especially with standardized testing, there is, there are only so many hours in the day. So, you know, years ago, when we had the penmanship classes, those days are gone. I have explained to people that we do teach penmanship in the schools, but that I myself needed to know exactly what our curriculum is, what time, or, you know, what grades we do that. And I would like to see us be able to improve the teaching of cursive writing for our students because going forward, the benefits of it, from what I've seen, and I did pull some articles up, but it's beneficial to students because of the speed with which they can write. It can be very helpful with testing when they have to do an essay, and also that it can help students who have dyslexia and other hand-eye coordination, and that it actually is very good for the brain to be able to write in cursive. So, I just wanted to ask if I could find out what our curriculum is, and then actually see if there's some more, if there are more details, or if there's some more steps we need to take to implement cursive writing in our curriculum at specific grade levels. So, I think that's a question for Ms. Murtagh through you, Mr. Mayor.
A couple of things. I agree, but a lot of kids are texting and typing now, but they do need to have that skill. One of the things that I'd like to do is perhaps bring it to the Education Subcommittee, but I would also like to speak to teachers and administrators. It's usually a third grade. Where we tackle it is in first, third grade, and we usually embed it into our writing. We used a heavy curriculum that it was like 40, 45 minutes a day. Now, it's embedded into the writing periods, usually most teachers do that, but that's something that I would like to follow up and maybe put into the Education Subcommittee.
That would be great. Thank you. I know when we were in third grade, that's where it started, big red pens. I don't think they make those anymore. You dealt with inkwells, didn't you?
Yes, I did. And thank you for bringing that up, yeah.
Well done, Mrs. Dunn.
Every once in a while. But, you know, that was what I was telling people, but I didn't have enough information. I knew we were utilizing lessons in that, that we were teaching the students, and I had, I had hoped it was third grade because that was what I was used to. But, thank you. If you could come back with some recommendations, I would like to see it. And I actually would like to suggest that to, I know all of the teachers, they always have the kids writing in journals, they write stories, and that's how they use the cursive writing. But there are a lot of older residents who are interested in volunteering, and that a writing partnership between students and some of our elderly citizens might be a really great way to have the children get used to writing in cursive. And actually, some of these folks were ready to volunteer and come in to help teach cursive writing. They were that adamant about it. So, it could be a very nice partnership, and it would help everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to follow up on the inkwell comment.
Motion to adjourn?
I just wanted to say that one of the benefits of using inkwells was that the pen that you used had a little clip on it. You would dip it into the inkwell, draw the clip, and the pen, the ink would draw right into the pen, and then you would close the clip, and you'd be able to write with it. However, you could also go like this with the pen and squirt the ink at your next-door neighbor in the elementary classroom, which was really fun.
You never did that, though.
Mrs. Dunn, right now.
Yeah, if I had the inkwell, I would have, yeah.
Great. Items for the next agenda will be handled on the regular course. Thank you for a great meeting. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?